Named as CHSC Cheerleading Team of the Year and placing sixth at the New England Championships. Is there somebody to up and tell us everything that's going on here? Alright, please, at the podium, please.
Okay, so unfortunately Coach Ashley couldn't be here tonight, but she wanted me to speak on her behalf. This year the girls won their fifth FCX title in seven years, as well as placed first at the State Open Championship. Because of this, they were nominated as Connecticut Team of the Year. I couldn't be more proud of this hardworking, talented, and deduced group of athletes.
Right. Is the Team of the Year a new category?
It is, it's, uh, this is the first year.
Okay, and what's involved in being named Team of the Year?
Um, we went against, I think it was like thirty teams, right? So it's like everyone in the state, so it's huge.
Fantastic, congratulations.
Thank you.
And you mentioned, how many championships have you won down the past seven years?
Five.
Five out of seven?
Yeah.
Five out of FCX?
Mm-hmm.
That's pretty impressive. The FCX is a pretty strong athletic conference.
Yeah.
So you guys are doing really well.
Yeah.
Very cool. Alright, does anybody else want to say anything?
Yeah.
Was that a yes? Alright.
I thought they were gonna do it.
Yeah, I was saying. You don't have to, but we do have certificates, so what we'd like to do is invite you up. Guys, come on up here. So what we're gonna do is invite you up one at a time, as I call your names here. Alright, Sir Hannity up here?
Yes.
Here you go, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Sir Hannity, stay up here, don't, you don't. Kim Monet. Amani Billings? Not here? Can I give this to somebody to say to her?
Yes.
Avineel Brushia? Congratulations. Jessica Fox? Rachel Fox? You guys related?
Yeah.
We got two.
Congratulations. Alyssa Hogar? And Samantha Hogar? Two pairs of sisters.
Thank you.
And Katie Fishgaster?
She's not here.
And Lulu Lombardo? Now, how many girls on your team?
Twenty.
Twenty? Have you all performed, congratulations, have you all performed at once?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
That's a lot of coordination.
Yep.
Paige McGee?
Thank you.
Maya McHersky? Did I get that right?
Yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Amanda O'Brien? And thank you for being so great to get up here and speak. Carly Pickering? There we go, thank you, Sir Hannity. Carolyn Placy?
Repasi.
Repasi. Congratulations. Alexa Tymon? Oh, Kiki Vaughn?
Nope, she's not yours.
Lily Williams? Congratulations. And Delaney Woodfine? And nobody's left, right? We got everybody?
Totally.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, how many, how many seniors are here? So you guys are all coming back?
Yeah.
So you, are you like the favorite for next year?
They should be.
I mean, you guys, you guys are like second only to UConn women in terms of how much. I just want to say thank you, you're making your town very proud.
Thank you.
Maybe you guys can kneel down.
I know you've been at all that hardwood stuff.
You guys are preparing for your.
Mike, where are you?
Wait till you're up. Here we are. Does that work?
Do you want to get in there, Greg?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, get in there.
That's the example there.
Ha, 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 okay, that's great.
Smile, let you three smile, congratulations.
Very well done.
See you here next year.
Did you jump right here now?
I saw the pet here.
Yes, we're missing Sherri. Okay, alright. And, and being a little bit late without his, having.
Totally agree, wherever you want to squeeze it out. I didn't know if you'd seen the pet.
And there goes our crowd, there's our audience. You're entirely welcome. Tom, move on up. Alright, next up. Minutes, and I think we're all here for all these, so we can make these a group or one at a time? Do a group change.
Group is fine with me.
Okay, then to consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting from March 16th, regular meeting from March 28th, and regular meeting from March 29th. May I have a motion to accept? Make a motion. A second?
I'll second it.
Alright, any comments or edits?
No.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Alright, next up, a resignation, and this is for information only, from the Conservation Commission. Raymond Poncelot, Republican, 882 Reef Road. His term was from 1114 to 1119, and his resignation date was March 9th, 2016. Next up, first election appointment, this is for information only, to the Southwest Regional Mental Health Board. Norian Lennon Bradley, a Democrat, 66 Lilian Drive, for a term of 316 to 319. This is to fill a vacancy for Patricia King, who resigned in the previous term. The appointment date was March 23rd, 2016. Next up, appointments to hear, consider and act upon the following appointment, to the Affordable Housing Committee. Walter Dunne, unaffiliated, from 54 Cedarhurst Lane, for a term of 1113 to 1117, and this is to fill a vacancy for Richard Gribko, who resigned. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll do that.
A second?
I'll second it.
Alright, any comments? Is Mr. Dunne here?
There we are.
Good. Any comments from the board?
Just appreciate you stepping up to do this, I saw that you just got off the word.
Sure, well, listen, I'd like to say a few words.
Sure, that'd be great.
Right ahead.
I've worked, not in the last couple of years, with homeless people. I actually see people retire, they don't have a pension, but I also think you have to be smart. I think, I spoke with some today, saying this is where I was gonna be, she goes, no, you can't put them in, set up communities where they're just in one corner, and then it turns into the McKinley area, which I grew up in, when we, growing up with my kids in McKinley, I mean, somebody who went somewhere else, and they say, ah, you can't go to McKinley, nobody's gonna move there. It turns out to be false, but some perceptions linger, and I think you have to be smart when you do it, but I think that, that's why I'm a centrist, I think you can overreach, I think at the same time you need it. So I kind of sit in the middle, and I sat on the committee last month, and I was very, very impressed with, I've been on a lot of committees in my life, and this committee is very bright, so I would look forward to serving with them.
Well, thank you. Any further comments?
No, I just, I agree, I think they're doing a lot of good work, so happy to have you on board.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for volunteering to serve.
Thank you.
Just want to thank you, and I want to thank you for your volunteer work on the Ward Roof Building Committee also.
Oh, sure.
We really appreciate that and getting that moving. And you're right, there's a number of very important proposals in the Affordable Housing Update Plan that we have, and I think that, appreciate your both being interested in that and taking time to get involved.
Great, great, thank you, thank you.
And then next up is the Fairfield Ludlow High School Building Committee, and this will go on to the Board of Finance and the RTM for approval. And this is to hear, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled, "Resolution Amending and Restating Resolution Adopted by the Representative Town Meeting on June 24th, 2013, Entitled, 'A Resolution Appropriating $11,630,000 for the Costs Associated with the Expansion and Renovation of Fairfield Ludlow High School,' and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation to increase the amount of the appropriation and bond authorization by $3,907,674." May I have a motion to accept? Make a motion. Mr. Timniak, a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, thank you. So the item is before, Mr. Donald, would you like to step us through this?
Sure. Good evening, my name is Mark Donald, I'm the Chair of the Fairfield Ludlow Building Committee. I want to thank you for the opportunity you present, and I think at this point, the best way to proceed is to introduce Mr. Peter Manning from Gilbane, and he'll give us a summary of the process and program.
Very good, thank you.
Hello, hello again, for the record, my name is Peter Manning, Gilbane Building Company, I'm a senior project executive, involved in not only Ludlow, but Riverfield Schools, and we, we prepared a slideshow that I think all of you have, to step through this really quickly. A lot has happened since Mark and I last stood before this board. The biggest thing is, we opened the addition and completed the roof at Ludlow, and we're here today to basically give you a quick update, and to give you an update on the costs of Phase III, where we stand on the cost of the overall project to date, and request additional funding. Onto page three of your PowerPoint slides, just a real brief summary, we set this project up in three different phases. First was the roofs, second was the classroom and cafeteria, third was the windows, and the priority was really set based on the needs of the Board of Ed and the, and the school department. Little background information, the funding was approved way back in 2013, and designed for the Ludlow project started in 2014. With regard to some quick budget history, on 7/29, we, we came before this board and gave a detailed history, and we provided that slideshow for your consideration. There were really a couple of key points. Prior to construction, it was determined that we could not complete all three phases for the initial funding. The second point was, the school superintendent urged us to complete the academic wing and the cafeteria because of program problems that would be caused if that wasn't opened in September last year, and as a result of that, the Board of Education amended the ed spec to make some revisions to the roof, to bring the cost of the roof down, but also to carve out parts of Phase III that would not be able to be afforded with the money that was available. So with regard to a quick schedule summary, we talked, roof is complete, classrooms are With regard to the windows, the thing that was driving the timeframe on the windows was EPA approval, because of the fact that there were some environmental issues with regard to asbestos and PCBs, EPA was involved, and there were a series of three different submissions made to EPA before we got final approval from the EPA of the work plan. At the time that that was approved, we were then able to go back to the state and get approval to bid, and that all fell into place October, November of 2015, at which time we bid the project, and in early January, we took bids on the project. Jumping back to page seven, with regard to the current project status, this is a cost accounting of the costs on the project to date, and total cost basically expended to date is $11,371, 300 of which is really related to Phase III, in design costs, environmental inspections, development of environmental abatement plans, those sorts of things. So the balance coming back from the project is $258,838, which would then be available for the balance of the Phase III construction. Page eight is a detailed summary of, of those costs, and it really is, this detailed summary is really pared down because there's probably fifteen or twenty line items under each category, so there's a whole lot of backup that is behind the data on this sheet, but it highlights in the, the circle is the $258,000 worth of, of contingency that's, owner contingency that's still available on the project. So on page nine, just, I summarized the EPA submissions, there were three separate submissions, actually four separate submissions to EPA, and we finally have received the approval in December of 2015, at which time we did the project. It was hoped that once we did the project, we would be able to, to come before you and the other boards and commissions to get approval, to move forward and get work going for this summer of 2016. Because of the fact that the approvals will not occur until later this month, because of the lead time on windows and, and the other materials, it is anticipated that we will not be able to start until 2017 and 2018, so those two summers. And then, the last page is a summary of the funding request, the construction cost part of it, the $3,147 is based on hard bid numbers. We have hard bid numbers from, from bidders, we have included some monies for adjustments for escalation because of the fact that we will not be starting in 16, that we'll move to 17. The next category are architect and engineers fees, which Perkins Eastman has given us budget numbers for that. Owner consultant fees are really mostly environmental. The firm, Salda, is.
Woodard and Curran.
Woodard and Curran, and also AMC are both involved in the, the management of the abatement, and we've included the builder's risk cost, the state education fees, for a total of owner consultant fees of $180,000. Added on to that, excuse me, is some city professional fees of $20,000. We've included a 15% contingency on this project, just because of the nature of the hazmat, and the total estimated cost to complete Phase III is $4,166,512, reduced by the $258,000 that's available on the initial funding approval. So the grand total on the, the last page is, is the number that is in your resolution, $3,907,674.
Do we receive state reimbursement for this?
We do.
What's the percentage?
Twenty-six point three-nine.
So we'll get a million back of the four, roughly?
Roughly, right.
Okay. I guess just, this project can't start this summer, is there?
It's, it's basically because of lead time on windows. The lead time for glass and glazing is about 12 weeks, and if we get approval in April, we basically miss the summer. We, you know, there would be a potential to, to capture some of the windows in late August, it may not be worth the, the disruption to the campus to do that. So, we'll, we'll explore all options if we can get the windows released, but in general, the, the low bidder, who was Cherry Hill Glass out of Branford, has indicated that, you know, 12 to 14 week lead time basically puts you, May, June, the end of July, before you have windows here, and we need to be out of their hair on the school campus by the middle of August.
Alright, so if we had all the bids in by January 6th, why didn't we include this when we did the bonding package in early February, I think? What, what, I guess what, I'm asking, what, why are we doing this in April, when it looks like according to this, it was all bundled up and, if the bids came in January 6th, and we had, had a go on it, and we had an EPA approval in October, November the previous year, it seems to me there's a window, we could have jumped on that 12 weeks, you just described, is there a reason?
Yes, I'll take that one. I met with the Building Committee, we reviewed where we were, both also making sure that we finished up the other two projects, which were not entirely done at that point, and because of the cost overruns on the first two phases, I wanted to take time and step through what happened there, and where we were here to make sure that we're moving forward on this. And then we also had additional projects coming through, Holland Hill, Fairfield Woods, school security, all as part of that going through on our February timeframe, that was just a lot to uncover all at once.
Okay, and that, I think that's a good, that's a fine answer. My concern by not moving forward is that there's a thing in here which says that the cost is, could increase based upon that extra year.
About $190,000.
Yeah. I think we need to look at how we have this stuff rolled out, and, I mean, I know that's a different conversation, but I think we need to have a construction project manager to oversee this stuff, and it'd be something I'd willing to, willing to explore in the budget, just so we don't get queued up like we did this year, and lose a project for a full year, based upon the windows we have to order in the lead time, and when we want to install them, based upon the students out for the summer, I mean, we're three years from completion on a project which started in 2013, is that essentially where we are? So, I guess that's my frustration I'm looking at here, and then we have a built-in $100,000 potential escalator for us boards not moving in a timely manner on this, when we had the bids in place, so I, I understand.
Chris, the one, the one comment I will make is that, had it not been for EPA's delay, we would have had this thing bid probably eight months ago, 10 months ago, ready to queue up for this summer of 16. So EPA did push us right to the, to the brink, and, and, you know, at, at that point, I, I think it was a, an evaluation of what was on the docket, and, and making sure that we had good financials on the other two phases.
I understand that, I just, I feel like, I look at that window of time as something we could have pressed harder, saved a year, and saved $100,000, and if the EPA was done October, November, I think there's a, a window where us boards are, are to blame for the process going through, or just not moving forward when we should have. I think this project seems to be ready, should have been included in the bonding package we approved in, was it February, like, we did all the bond?
There wasn't, this would be come through as a separate resolution in all cases, it's not a, a non-recurring item.
Well, I think we could have included it in, in that when we did that timeframe, just to save a year and $100,000.
Yeah, the issue is, is it does need to be ready for that, and there were a number of i's to be dotted and t's to cross, to make sure that's the case.
You did mention too, that you were evaluating the cost overruns in the first two phases of the project. I'd be interested in hearing about those, and I was wondering when we're gonna hear about that.
I'm, I'm, I don't have any substantial information to provide to you, the, there was a packet that was delivered to this board, and I know there's two new members on that, and we tried to get that information out to both of you in advance at this meeting. The bottom line is, the, the classroom addition, the cafeteria addition, and the roof, basically came out over budget to the, where they could both be funded under the original 11.6 cap, but did not allow for the roof, the, the windows to be included as well.
Could you do a brief summary of that at a future date for the board, just to catch everybody up?
Sure.
Would that help?
Yeah, that would be helpful, and I guess I'm wondering, as we're gonna approve money for this next project, have we learned anything, or we need to make sure that this phase comes in as much on budget as possible?
Just to address that, I think the, the biggest concern was the 11.6 was based on conceptual estimates. The funding that we're asking for now is based on bids. So from the standpoint of did we learn something, we, we learned, let's not go back to the board until we have firm numbers from the bidders, especially on a project where, you know, with abatement projects...